Really something. Thank you, Chad. Wow, that was really delayed, wasn't it?
Call to order the committee meeting for the McGuffey School Board of Directors. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Oberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to members of the board of directors. I appreciate your team in attendance. Members of McGuffey family and community here as well. I have three items for community agenda this evening. Before I do, I do want to take a moment to recognize the work of two groups, very important work that came down this summer. First, people recognize, of course, his credit key. His entire maintenance and custody team. Out of all the halls, mostly here at high school, I'm amazed how quickly they have worked clean the floors, the rooms. It truly is an incredible effort. I think every year they need to narrow out what they do. So I wanted to make sure that we recognize the spoils here does not start off. They started boot foot without the hard work of what they do behind the scenes. That's the first we've all recognized. The second group is always behind the scenes. Certainly, the work you're seeing throughout the course of the year in F B nine administration. Not only are they tasked with getting their buildings ready and making sure that all the materials are there for teachers when they return, but they're currently busy scheduling the final little places where they have to make a stint work or a portion work that's almost size, but not twice. I've often said this to others, like playing a game of Doodle. Got to make sure all the numbers kind of fit there. And not only are they doing that, but it's also been quite active summers from a big shot perspective. And I think we're very aggressive in campaigning to go after it. We spent a lot of time with them, so they're balancing a lot of different things. So again, I want to recognize both groups as candidates.
So speaking about round five, I'm actually going to take the podium here for a unique honor. Long time, I'm going to say long time coming. We're looking at, I think, six years possibly. So I'll make sure that. Okay, very good. All right, so as we know, here at McGuffey during the school year, each month, we have students of the month that are presented to us actually in the next video. And our teachers vote on a student or students of the month for each month. Now clearly, we're not in school. However, each month during the 2019-2020 school year, which as you remember was the COVID year, we continued as a middle school to nominate students. In fact, during the month of March, there were 24 students nominated by 28 staff members in the middle school. So quite a number of students, quite a number of teachers nominating those students. From that group, there were two nominations that came forward. Now, the problem was it happened right before we stopped having school. So you remember that Friday, the 13th? And everything changed. So that was right before the next board meeting. So we had two students that were nominated, selected for students of the month back in March of 2020. They were Hayden Florian and Kalen Hughes. But again, unfortunately due to COVID-19 and the cancellation of school, that did not happen. Tonight, I want to rectify that. Is he not here? Oh. I can come back to it. I shall look to you for a wink and anon. All right. All right, well, then, this is, yeah, I want him to hear this. I mean, these guys appreciate it, but I want pain to hear it, so. All right, so we, the cat's out of the bag.
To be continued.
To be continued, so let me, please move on to which is board policy two hundred. So in fact, there you'll see the board policy. This is unique in that. This is unique in that typically before a board meeting, we would always have a policy meeting. It started about five months ago. We're unable to do that for this month of July. However, the following policy, which is student enrollment, is very important, very important to discuss here. And let me just grab my notes on that one. So again, policy 200 regards student enrollment. I am proposing that we consider a change to this policy, and it's going to be aligned to our future-ready comprehensive goals that are in our plan that was board-approved, based on the goal of retention and recruitment of high-quality staff. A priority that from a cultural standpoint ensures that we have high-quality learning environments by having high-quality individuals in our schools. And again, as I said, it's a definite focus for our school over the next three years and actually has been. I will start my discussion just quickly about starting with why. I'm a big why person, understanding what our core values are. And we know in Pennsylvania, one of our biggest challenges, and not just in the Commonwealth, but of course across the country, is the retention and even having certified teachers. The last two school years, P D E had more emergency-certified individuals than they had certified teachers in Pennsylvania. And we'll wait to see what the data holds for this coming year. But if I was a betting man, which I'm not usually, I would say we're probably facing the same thing. So how do we go about, in a very tight market, recruiting and then, of course, retaining those staff that we already have with us? So the concept behind my ask tonight is this. We would like to allow for our full-time employees who live outside of the district to enroll their children tuition-free. So again, deepen that loyalty to increase retention, attract also. So it's not just retention that we're focused on. You always have to focus on the leaky bucket. Because if you don't focus on that and you keep losing teachers and you're constantly having to replace them. So it's a focus on the retention of existing staff that we believe in, but also the recruitment of those future staff. And this would be one of those things. And again, and especially in a hard-to-fill positions, we know how important that is. So some key facts to consider when you're considering this policy. The first is that the district has 230 full-time staff. Of that, those that would be impacted is approximately 130 McGuffey full-time staff that live outside the district, which this policy would apply to. Based on, also based on the recent P D 363, which is the calculation of our tuition rates for special education and regular education. An annual tuition rate for a special education student is approximately, at McGuffey, $28,000. And a regular education student, according to that rate, is approximately $18,000. So let's talk about that. This policy change was not included in any specific line item in the last budget. So the budget that we're going to be going into the 2025-2026 school year, it is true, nothing from a budget line item perspective included this policy, right? So bringing on new students, I want to make that very clear. You know, however, and based on projected interest, number of teachers that I've talked to or individuals that I think would be interested in something like this, realistically, the number of employees that would be interested and the anticipated enrollment impact is minimal and can be absorbed under two things. The current staffing and of course, the numbers of students that we can have in each of our buildings. Because again, if you're talking about, say, a handful of students across all 13 grades, K through 12, you're not looking to have to increase your class, you know, the classroom itself, and you would not need to hire additional teachers. So from a cost perspective, there's really not a cost perspective to that. We're, oh, it's not on?
It's not on.
We apologize. I'm also acting as tech director tonight and apparently, apparently the, let's pause here. All right, I apologize. All right, let's see. Okay, it's, it's back on, it's back on. Thanks, Mike. Okay. Mike, was, was the audio there or? Okay, so the audio is still there. Okay, all right. Okay, so going back to that, so again, just talking about that, from the absorption of these additional students, it really should not be anything that would impact the budget itself. The increase in teachers or the increase in class sizing would be minimal, if any at all. So let me just kind of go back through the highlights of what you have there. The very last item of policy 200 is the section that we were asking to amend. So it's one section to itself. It applies only to full-time employees. It would cover their biological, adopted stepchild, or legal ward of that professional. No tuition charge for eligible students. Enrollment is space-dependent. Because I always want to make this clear, not that I think this would even be an issue, but we want to have that language in there, that it would be based on first priorities given to district residents. Right, so if there was an area where we couldn't because of not enough teachers, not enough space, a combination of two, preference priority always given to district residents in this policy. Students must meet all academic and behavioral expectations. If the individual becomes no longer full-time, that status then ends their tuition, and that must be arranged within two weeks. So they're given two weeks to either decide to pull the child out with them or continue with the tuition based on where they are in this school year. And then also too, transportation, very important. Transportation is not provided by the district, it would be provided by the parents. And that's usually the model. Parents want to take them with them to school, drop them off, and that's the model that you see there. So just in summary, then again, the reason why we're doing this is it aligns with one of our four goals from the F R C P that again was board-approved, that focuses on recruitment and retention. I think it has a minimal impact to our budget. I believe it promotes long-term retention. And finally, I think from a district our size that's constantly competing against some larger schools, I think this gives us an edge when it comes to that recruitment of potential staff in the future. So with that, I'll take questions.
I have a couple of questions. Enrollment is subject to space availability. What about services, services availability? If there are students with special needs and we would have to, the only way we can meet those needs is by servicing them out. Then we don't really meet, we don't really have the services availability. Does that take it into consideration as well?
Yes, yes, no, no, that would have to, absolutely.
Okay. And then children are full-time students or full-time employees may only attend McGuffey school district buildings and may not enroll in programs outside of the physical buildings. I'm assuming that's like our McCyber.
Yes.
We're talking specifically about enrollment in our physical building.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure that that was.
I mean, is that, is that, then again, the language that we crafted was with Ms. Hall for, for that section. We gave her ideas, the cyber and I, and then she crafted it and what the language you see there.
And the term space availability includes services. Am I understanding that correctly? It doesn't need to be a separate?
No, it would include services.
Okay. Thank you.
I do know that if I may, Ms. Hall did draft this and she said, you know, one concern of this would be, you know, to give her a separate student and they had to be placed out. And that's a cost. But she said she could attempt to go back to the home district for payments if there's no guarantee.
But if we're saying that enrollment is subject to that, then we could always deny them enrollment because we can't meet those needs. And we would not be legally required to meet their needs because we're not their home district. Right? By law. Thank you.
So this is all our full-time employees?
All full-time employees.
So cafeteria workers, maintenance, police, everybody?
Everyone, we believe this should apply to everyone. I mean, everyone has a role. I say, I say oftentimes they say, well, I'm just a bus driver or I'm just a cafeteria worker. And in this space, when you work with kids, no such thing is just. They all are valued and all are very important to, holding on to them.
Do we have any idea the number that may be applying for this?
I, I do not. I, I, that would have to be something I'd have to survey. I, I do know of, of two families that have interests and have shared that with me.
Thank you.
So this would be the first reading and then the second reading in a, in August?
So typically, that's what we do. However, as we know, with any policy that's already been approved, this is just a change to that. We could approve it tonight, and that's actually going to be my ask, is that it is approved this evening.
To give families the time if they need to.
Right, if, if this was something that was approved tonight, that would immediately, probably even before I left here, send an email home because again, if we do this in August, it's really close. It's really close, and even now, it may be really close, quite honestly. That's the only reason I'm even asking for it, because typically we would have discussed this in policy, but we didn't have.
I want to get back to the two families that are interested.
Sure.
Could we discuss it at this, at special meetings we're going to have sometime next week? Could you do the survey in between?
Sure, I mean, certainly, I could. I, I wouldn't recommend that again, because it's really pushing up against start school year.
Would you be 100% sure how it could possibly impact the budget?
My, my feeling on this is that we're not really, and again, think about it this way. Even if it was, and this would be amazing, I think, because it would, it would definitely be the reason why we're doing this. Let's just say we had 10 students, 10 students over 13 grades. That's still minimal, if anything, going to impact your budget, the classroom, the teachers, those type of things. So.
Because it's not like you're creating new programs, you're not creating, I mean, you're, they're going to plop into the existing academic program.
There's a lot of.
The only catch that I would see is for special needs.
Certainly, and, and again, we would not want to discriminate on one or the other.
No.
So.
No, but I just, that's why I was asking about the enrollment subject to the space availability, because that is, it's costly.
As, as I've thought about this policy, I think the ones who are going to gravitate it more from a staff perspective are those that have little ones. They want to have them, you know, be able to pick them up, drop them off. And, and I think in one of the cases, that's in fact who I'm speaking about. So, but again, I, I would have to do something like that to have a truer number. It's my gut telling me that it's not going to be a large number, you know, initially, especially at this point.
If I may, there may be an option to sort of, you could modify it tonight so that the language is as you're requesting. I, I hear a concern that you want it to say space availability, which includes services.
Only because.
To make it clear, which I understand that.
I think it's one thing if we're bringing them in and it's services that we have in-house and we, but it's a different thing if we're bringing them in and they're going to need services that we can't meet.
Right.
And we have to.
Have the capability to meet, that's right.
We have to go outside of the district for that.
Right, and then I also think that you could always amend this in the future if it turns out to be cost prohibitive. And I think that that would be something that the board would then have to discuss in the future. But I think you could try it, see the interest. And then, but there's always the ability to amend the policy in the future if it appears.
We can call a policy up anytime, won't you?
Right, so I, you know, for concern that maybe, you know, if there's an influx, you know, but I don't, I don't think that that's really what's driving that.
I don't either, and to be clear, I just want to be perfectly clear. I'm not opposed. I've asked for this for probably six years. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I just want to make sure that we've crafted the language in a way that's going to work. And I, I agree.
So what I would suggest that is making, if you, if it does come to a vote tonight, making a motion to include that language. And then the final policy language will reflect if the motion passes.
I will say from the expense side, expense side, I think the cost would be minimal. We're, we have the classes anyway, we have the teachers anyway. It can be beneficial on the revenue side, however, because our subsidies are based on our number of students enrolled. So that could increase our revenue a little bit. It would be for the future years because they look back a year on your enrollment. But it could be beneficial on the revenue side.
I think the big benefit, though, really is going to be morale. It, it really is. It's going to be your community, it's going to be your, your employees who feel more like, even though they don't live in a community, feel like they're going to take ownership, kind of like in, in the community itself. I've always said that I think that that's a better way to go. So.
Yeah, I would just have a question is we have it, they have to start paying tuition within two weeks. My concern is, I know you can never, what happens if somebody passes away? Is that a little bit too short of a timeframe? Or would we need to specify that or, I, I just don't know.
I, I mean, so there's no language that speaks to that, you know, clearly. We, we were looking at a timeframe that again, you know.
But the board could at that time take into account extenuating circumstances and make a decision outside of that, correct? From a legal perspective?
Yes.
Yes.
So my question is, I know the cost is minimal, but who is footing that bill? You mentioned grants. Where is the money coming that is covering that tuition?
So, so the reason why I brought tuition, because there is, there's a formula that we use for both 363s for special education or regular education. There's not, I want to be very careful how I say this. It's not that there's not a cost. But based on the number of students, based on class sizes, where we have, based on existing teachers and existing classrooms, there's not going to be a need to hire, for example, a new teacher. There's a cost associated to that. There's not going to be a need to create more space because that's really going to be taken care of. That's, that's where I was going. I, I, I did want to be fair on two, two points. One, not budgeted, clearly we know that was not budgeted. And two, there is a cost. I mean, there, there is a cost to it, but it's not, sorry, can you help me with this? I, I feel like, yeah. Yes.
You already have the material, you already, that's what I was trying to get to.
Yes.
So it's not like, Monique, I think you're thinking of it as a way of, that's how much we pay per student.
Right, that's exactly what I'm thinking of.
Formula that the Department of Education uses, based on our budget and the number of students of what is costing us to educate per student.
Average.
So as our enrollment increases, but our budget stays relatively the same, our per student cost would basically come down.
Come down.
Yes, yes. And there's not an actual out-of-pocket cost.
And the only other place that this comes up is if you have students who live outside of the district and want to attend our, for example, they live in, I don't know, whatever district that's local that doesn't have an F F A program, and they want to attend our school because we do. They can do that, but they have to pay tuition.
Right.
Because you can't just go enroll in any public school you want. That's not the way that's all work.
Same if they want to go to another school and the other district pays.
Correct, correct.
Sometimes it'd be an agreement between the two school districts at that point. This is eliminating the need for an agreement between the two school districts.
No.
Because that school district is not paying anything, the parent's not paying anything, we're just absorbing.
Not really absorbing, but I, I see the point now that it's not like, it's not like we're paying $18,000 per regular ed student that we bring in.
No, and I think any concerns when you talk about, like, the class size is always the one that comes to mind, right? You know, like Mrs. Shingles was, if you had 10 students and now you have 12. You know, well, what if you have, I don't know, 22 students and now they're going to have 28, right? That's the reason for the space availability language. Because then we could look at that and say, we don't have the space for that.
Who is determining the class sizes, though, at that point? How is that?
Well, some of, yeah, and some of it depends, well, it depends on what level you're talking about, too. Because if the high school level, it depends on how many different.
There is a ratio that is determined from P D, and it varies from K through two, three through five, so it decreases. And currently, we're, we're not at that threshold in any of ours.
But ultimately, this decision as far as enrollment subject to space availability or need would go to the superintendent, correct?
Correct, and again, if we found ourselves in that situation where we were not able to, again, our students take first priority. And that's, you know, definitely in there, that was something that Rebecca definitely wanted to make sure that was understood.
So hypothetically, if all 130 employees wanted to bring their students here, that could result in, if you, if you recommend it, we'll put it that way. All, all 130 of them said, this is awesome, let's do this. Because we have an awesome school. You would be subject to saying no to some of them.
Potentially.
Or even just more than what we can fit. How is it determined then, after, after our first priority is given to our district employees, how is it prioritized on what students would get to come versus what students wouldn't get to come?
So I'll be honest, the hypothetical of not run, only because I don't see that happening. So we do, so. It, it does, and so, and that really is, so you're speaking of our F F, our F L A program.
Yes.
We've had this year alone, I want to say three students that we've tuitioned from other districts because this program, their district doesn't allow for. But we look at that class size first and then determine, you know, on the first come, first served.
So it would be the same here?
That would, that would be what we would recommend, would be first come, first served. And it's could be, I was in Indiana and we did have tuition there. You know, and it was oftentimes maybe one kid could, or students, but because of age.
Right, okay. In the same family, you mean, yeah.
And it would be strictly based on that student.
It'd be a great problem to have, so.
I, I get it. I will tell you, I don't, I don't, that's not going to happen.
This could actually potentially help us financially even.
Yeah, it will increase our revenue, definitely.
So when, when we have, when we have enough students and the state comes back in a couple of years and says, you have this many students, you could raise your taxes up to this level. That's including our taxpayers and our district taxes being raised. If the majority board decided to cover these decisions now.
For the tax purposes, they don't look at enrollment at all. It's just basically what we can afford as a district based on the revenue we're receiving to pay our bills. So they don't look at student enrollment at all. Right.
Right, I understand, right, exactly. And that was a concern of mine because if it's affected that, then they're paying for not only McGuffey kids. Okay, so subsidies as in when we.
Basic education subsidies, special education subsidies, those are all formula based on our number of students enrolled.
And that's coming from the state, all of the reimbursements and things like that that we're getting.
And as for the revenue increases would come from.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I see, so I'm going to start over a little bit here. I see our guest of honor has arrived. So I'm going to go back to the podium and give a, I'll go through most of them again, so. Not to embarrass you, Hayden. But I was just saying to the board and to those that were here, an injustice was done, an injustice maybe even, due to the fact that right before you were going to be announced. Sounds great? Sounds great, sounds great. So this is back in 2020, right before the board meeting that would introduce you along, again, I'll give also credit to Kalen Hughes as the students of the month from the middle school. We went on lockdown with COVID-19. And an honor to you because this is something where we had 28 staff members, 28 teachers nominate 24 students. So you were one of two from those 24, so that's a big honor. Unfortunately, again, as we said, that, that did not happen. And we were made aware of that, so tonight, we're probably blading this on. And we were made aware of that, so tonight, uh, we're probably, um, blading this honor on you, uh, Mr. Florian. So this was what was written. Uh, Dr. Goxon's not here tonight, but he actually pulled out what he had put in his script. So this is going back to Dr. Goxon, 2020. So this is Dr. Goxon's words for you. You ready? All right. Hayden received nominations from three different teachers. So I don't have who they were. Uh, each of whom had glowing things to say about the type of student he was in their classrooms. And being nominated, it was noted that Hayden displayed leadership throughout the classroom and is always eager to help, uh, this is seventh grade you, helping others when asked for help. Hayden works hard and accepts nothing less than his very best effort in class. Additionally, Hayden was described as a kind and empathetic student who always offers a helping hand and goes above and beyond and always works. With that, I'd like to introduce student of the month for McGoffey, seventh grade, 2020, March of 2020. Mr. Hayden Florian, what's coming up? So we have a little, little certificate for you here. And, and, well, absolutely. And, and you want to give us an update on where we are now? I know you're full-time, look ahead.
So, uh, after graduating, I'd started a co-op position, uh, earlier this senior year. And after graduating, soon after, they offered me full-time. So I'm working there right now. It's going very well. I like my coworkers and I'm getting a lot of respect there, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to start again with just a recap of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We've been trending pretty well on our revenue side. As you can see, we budgeted just under thirty-five million. All of these numbers as of, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, so we were just a little over thirty-seven million. So, so way over a hundred percent of what we had predicted to receive in revenue. Now, what is contributing to that? Well, for one, we, and I, when I create the budget, I do tend to be conservative on the revenue side because it's a what-if game. We do, um, try to predict a ninety-six point two-five percent collection rate from our real estate taxpayers. Uh, we have actually exceeded that ninety-six point two-five percent this year, so that has increased our revenue on that side. Our delinquent tax revenue has increased significantly this year. But as you know, as people pay off their delinquent taxes, that may not be there for next year's budget, right? Our earnings on investments are about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we predicted. There's still talk about interest rates falling, so still want to be a little bit mindful of that going into next year. Our rental income was significantly higher, and that was due mainly to a new lease with Range Resources. And then our royalties that we're getting from Range Resources, those fluctuate from month to month and hard to predict that, but, uh, we're seeing an increase in that as well right now. And then our noneducational subsidies, these are actually our transportation subsidies. Some of that subsidy money that you see in this number is actually reconciliations from the prior year as well. So that comes in now. We have to tabulate it for now and calculate it for now, but it's to pay off things from the prior year. Our expenditure is also looking relatively well. We budgeted thirty-five point nine million on the expenditure side. We were just under thirty-three and a half million at the end of June, so ninety-three point one percent of our budget. But we still do have a month and a half left, really, in this, this school year because our teachers get paid over the summer hitting our twenty-four, or, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So I wanted just to show you what our current and what I think our projected net position is going to be at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Our revenues right now are sitting at thirty-seven point two million. Our expenditures right now are sitting at thirty-three point five million, which is a positive balance for us of three point seven million. But I am still anticipating we are going to have to pay out two point one million dollars through payroll, taxes, PERS. And then we are still getting reconciliation bills for things like cyber charter schools and our transportation. Um, so at the end, I'm hopeful and cautiously hopeful that we will see a positive balance after twenty-four, twenty-five of about one point five million. And very cautious. Because you never know what could happen in the meantime. All right, so how does that play into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget? So as you know, we had anticipated expenditures of just over thirty-seven million. And the final budget was put into the state, so that part's done. Our revenue was projected at thirty-five and a half million. We were anticipating a deficit of one point eight million. If we, if everything plays out, again, cautiously hopeful, and we do have that carryover of one and a half million, that sets us up in a very, very different place, and a much better place, that we may only be looking at a deficit of around a hundred and eighty-five thousand. However, I already know the federal title monies are on hold, some of them, not all of them. But our Title II and our Title IV right now is on hold from the federal government. That's seventy-five thousand dollars to us. I also already know that through coal assessment, we are losing almost four hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. So that's going to hit us, too. So at the end of twenty-four, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, you can see our non-spendable assigned and unassigned. This is nothing new to you. This is what we've been talking about through this budget season, for a total fund balance of five point two. Now, on paper, because of what I put into the state as our expenditures and our revenues, I'm thinking now we may come out with a little bit better position with our unassigned not going down to only five hundred thousand, but maybe still be around two million dollars. So that would put us not in a great place still going into the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, but in a much better place, having a little bit of savings there in case of those emergencies. And we do already know from Mr. McKee, uh, talking, we need to do some repaving in the parking lots, you've seen it. We need to update our security systems, you've heard that before. So, um, having that little bit of cushion will help us and, and better position us.
And this is still all very.
And this is all still, yes.
Because we won't know the final numbers until fall.
Right. We won't know the final numbers until, the end of August will be our last pay for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So starting in September is when we'll really start to pull all of our files and the auditors will start taking a look and let us know where we fell. And you will know that, too, by the September board meeting of, of where everything played out. So cautious, cautiously optimistic. Any questions?
Um, auditors, who are we using? The same?
Yes. Zelikowski. Yes, first of the D.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah. So that one is correct, as of June twenty twenty-four. And then what I'm predicting at the end of June twenty twenty-six. Because I won't know until we look at twenty-four, twenty-five stuff where we ended up at June of twenty-five. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Over. That will conclude committee at six forty-two PM. We will reconvene for the regular school board meeting at six fifty PM.
It is now six fifty-four. Call to order, the McGuffey School Board of Directors meeting. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Here. Present.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Eber. Now we'll turn it over to our Vice President, Mr. Thomas.
Our opening prayer this month is going to be had by Pastor Linda from the East Buffalo Presbyterian Church.
It's good to be here, having three grandchildren, we're completing three McGuffey sisters, and in a few years, having their children now. So I have great fond memories. I love, they went to Joe Walker. And I loved it. Every time I got to go there and be there, it was such a gift. So I just wanted to share that with you. Reap, pray with me. For God of goodness and light, of mercy and hope. God, how much we need your hope. As a school board, as a community, as a state, as a nation, as your world, we need the hope fuel. But we come now to this place, having done about many tasks of the day. But God draw us now together to this task where you have called us. To this awesome responsibility, awesome responsibility of procedure and policy to all our children. So we pray now, God, knowing that you do not make us of one mind and one thought, that as we come together, that we be respectful of other thoughts and feelings. And we pray now that your Spirit, that it might come and be here, within all of those folks who are here, blessing them for their time, for their efforts, for what they give back to this community. We offer this prayer in the name of our risen Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to make an announcement that we held an executive session today at 5:00 PM to discuss personnel. At this time, we will take public comment on agenda items. Chief.
Ms. President, we have one. Vicki Jordan. Thank you, Chief.
Hello, everyone. So I'm here today to ask some questions about Policy Two Hundred. I want to thank you, Dr. Eber, for answering some of those questions in advance, but I still have a few more. So again, I just want to remind you all, I'm here just to give you a different perspective, something for you to think about. So my first question is, I want you all to remember, not too long ago, Dr. Eber, I'm not picking on you, but you were willing to increase the class size of our first grade students in Claysville Elementary to accommodate a teacher moving to the fifth grade at Joe Walker. None of us were happy about it, and the board made a decision for the class sizes to remain the same and for a new teacher to be hired to fill that position in Joe Walker. So my question now is, with this proposal, and pure speculation on how many students will be coming in, because without a survey, none of you really know, of these two hundred and thirty or one hundred and thirty outside district employees, how many students would actually come, my question becomes, what stops you from raising these class sizes, again, to a number we as a community aren't comfortable with, regardless of what PDE recommendations might be? So I would like to see something in the verbiage that maybe states before class sizes are increased, that the board has to approve it, only to keep a rein in on what you may feel is appropriate versus the community and the board may feel appropriate, because we've seen it happen once, so the potential is there to see it happen again. I will say this, and I'm really, I know for a fact that this has been under discussion with Joe Walker teachers for months. It came to me. I went to certain board members and I expressed my concerns, not knowing the full details. So I'm curious why this wasn't brought forward sooner, because it almost feels like waiting till this last minute to present doesn't give the board or the community a full opportunity to absorb the information. So for instance, if I say I want my student who's in, who's in Joe Walker, who's in Claysville Elementary, to go to Joe Walker, because the scores are higher there and the class sizes are smaller, I'm told no, because of the district lines. But now we're going to allow non-district students to come in and fill spots within Joe Walker. So basically, you're giving a benefit to students outside of the district that the taxpayers within the district don't get. I'm curious about, is there a potential that there's going to be bias towards these students as their parents are now employees of the district? I wonder if, if there's truly going to be a cap? Is there a potential for children enrolled to be students of their own parents? Is there a consideration maybe for how many years they have to be an employee of the district before they earn this as a benefit? I will say, I was glad you removed it as an MOU last month and presented it as policy this month, because policy is much easier to change. We all know, once it becomes part of the contract, we're kind of stuck with it. At least with policy, in a year, if you're looking at this and you don't like what it looks like, you can withdraw this policy. Am I correct on that, Ms. Solicitor? So I mean, I'm not, I don't think it's a terrible idea. I'm just looking at it from the outside looking in, and it almost feels like, okay, these select parents are going to have school choice, but none of the rest of us have the opportunity of school choice. They get to pick where their students are going to go. We don't have that option. So it just, it's just an outside perspective, as I said. I know there was a time I wanted my grandson at Joe Walker, but I wasn't allowed that. But I know these teachers who want their students from outside the district in Joe Walker, that's exactly where they're going to go. So it's a little bit of a bad taste, for lack of better words. So again, you answered a lot of the questions, which I appreciate, because I was looking at this as an expense to the taxpayers that we were going to be now paying for students. I looked at it as you were giving away bargaining power for future negotiations with contracts, all of which I've come clearly against. So I do thank you for answering those questions, but again, I just want you to realize that being a taxpayer and having a student in the district and having certain requests that I can't, I'm not allowed to be included in, is a little bit of a hard pill to swallow. So I will save the whole $2 million increase in tax increases, because that clearly isn't going to be affected. But again, I would like to see some kind, something in the verbiage that states, before you or anyone is allowed to increase those class sizes, that the board has some input, just based on what happened with the first grade student. Thank you for your talk.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Chief, Ms. President, that concludes all public agenda.
Thank you, Chief. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five school board meeting as submitted.
No move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five to July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, check numbers eight one zero zero nine to check number eight one one two three, in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and forty-nine and five cents as submitted.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anybody abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the food service schedules of bills dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, check number seven eight zero three through check number seven eight zero five, in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and one dollars and ninety-four cents as submitted.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Stained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of June twenty twenty-five as submitted.
No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to hire Jay Adams for the utility position, subject to assignment in pursuit to the terms of the collective bargaining agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act One sixty-eight verification.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number two four three eight, effective June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
Amen.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think I might add, this is the last meeting, but somebody asked me about these numbers instead of names. Is the public, when they get online, able to see what we see under the administration content?
Not when they get online.
Not online, but hearing, getting it.
But the paper copy back here, they can.
Paper copies, they can.
And is there a reason we have to use numbers instead of names?
We've always used names up until.
I would ask council, do we have to use numbers instead of names?
Well, I would assume it was previous council, but we do recommend that it's generally, especially in times of, when the, when it's a more of a termination issue, it's more, because there could be reasons that we don't want to.
We always do that in other particular cases, but just new hires, I was wondering, because our own employees within the district have no idea who these people are.
These are not the resigning hires, these are resignations.
I understand that, but the people within our district does not have any idea who they are that's resigning, what positions are being resigned. That was just a question that was brought to me.
It is. Does it become part of the public record after we vote?
Yes.
Their names? Or is it still a number, like in the minutes?
On determination, it's always been numbers.
I just, I think that we thought, it's kind of, for lack of a better term, we've presented it in two ways, because we're saying that it's better to have them, the resignation, not new hires, but the resignation done by a number rather than a name, and yet, the papers we hand out when they attend the meetings have the administrative content with those names. So to me, it's like speaking out of both sides of our face. Either it is important enough that that information is never released to the public as to the names behind those employee numbers, or it's not. I don't think you should have it both ways, when we could go back to what it was until recently, where in termination perspective perhaps.
And I, This was, in fact, due, as we all are aware, we did not have this for the longest time, but within the winter months, we did have terminations, and so upon the recommendation of council at that point was to make it so that that was not something that was aired out.
I don't recall a termination, I recall a resignation.
So I would, I would just say that there are times where it may be a resignation that is termed that for the employee, for their future, but it is actually an exit strategy. And in those cases, you would want to keep it as the employee number. And it's probably, the recommendation I would say was probably just that all of the employees we think are treated as.
So that you're not.
So that the terminations are not really a spotlight on them. Now, I did not realize, so you're saying that over there on that table, it actually has the name.
And it has the administrative content.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
If you're looking, if you're, if the public is looking at it online, they don't have, they don't have access to the administrative content. But when they walk in this room.
And again, let me speak to that too. That is something that we've done in the past, and we just did not change. It would actually have to be placed in there as executives, so that only the board members, myself, Charlene, and Laura would see, so we can do that, certainly.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would recommend doing it.
So the agenda that is handed out, the paper copy is the same as what they would see online.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
So can I make a suggestion then, when we're accepting resignations, or even a termination, could be at least put the employee's position?
So that's a. I would not recommend doing it for the termination, because then that, that can be very identifying.
When we discussed last month, Ms. Hall mentioned the possibility of maybe during their exit interview, asking them if it would be okay if their name was listed under their resignation?
And that certainly would be a possibility, and I think generally someone leaving for a more benign reason, like they want to stay home with their family, or they just took a different job, for whatever reason, that's certainly very different than someone being maybe fired for cause, or, and it's negotiated out of termination under their contract. So I would suggest using the employee number, and then I, I, I like that suggestion of asking them. I mean, I would also suggest that probably people probably already know who half of this is, you know, this is not a large, in any community, in any school, they're going to know who's resigned, because probably the employee has told half the people that they work with. But I would not. Um, but I would not include the administration content on paper copies here. That kind of defeats the purpose.
So is that with the exit interviews and that being a suggestion, is that something the board has authority to direct? He asks when they, with the exit interviews, or is that something that administration would decide to ask?
If the administration would decide it, and then would bring it to the board and let you know.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm just trying to find out a way that our, all of our current employees can have an understanding of what positions are open or going to be open. Uh, it doesn't have to go to the entire community or anything, but some way so that our current employees know what positions are open. Because they may be teaching beside somebody, and they don't know that that, they're not gonna be teaching beside that person again. I mean, if, my, my main reason is for internal use only. But I asked it about the agenda, but the main thing is internal.
Are you asking that the employees be notified ahead of time of who is resigning? And what position may hold?
No, I'm asking that the employees be notified of any positions that are currently going to be open.
We do.
We do.
We do.
Do.
Yeah.
And how do we do that?
Um, so I'll, I'll speak to Laura in a second.
Well, I mean, I'll propose things as soon as we have to. And now that they anticipated job opening, this resignation, and they need to respond and apply for that job or any job that might come afterwards to the college stage or where they're still at. If they know, like, Mr. Brooker's leaving, and I wanted to go meet up with him, and he was there, then I take, I ask to say whatever may follow, whatever job may follow. But the position to go out.
And we've done that all along?
Always. Back to when I taught here, thirty years ago.
I was ever to balance my discussion for executive session.
Any further discussion? I think I'll be off tonight, Ms. Wilson. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number one six nine eight, effective June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number two five one eight, effective July second, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number two one six one, effective no more than sixty days from June twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number one seven nine one, effective July third, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number two one seven one, effective July first, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number two two nine three, effective July eighth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for that position.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanna say to all of the resignations, thank you for your time here at McGuffey.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Need a motion to hire Elizabeth Kraus as a second grade teacher at Bachelor's Step One prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment Claysville Elementary, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement, and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Welcome to McGuffey.
All right, good evening, Dr. Ober, Mr. Kern, Mr. Thomas, members of the board, fifteen colleagues, students, and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce Claysville's new second grade teacher, Ms. Elizabeth Kraus. Lizzie is a twenty-twenty graduate of McGuffey High School. She graduated summa cum laude from California University of Pennsylvania in twenty twenty-four, with a degree in early childhood education. Last year, she began her teaching career as a kindergarten teacher at West Green. And while she had a wonderful experience there, she wanted to come home to McGuffey. She loves this district, our students, and the community. And we are so happy that she has chosen to teach here. Lizzie, it's a nice to say good work.
Hello, everyone. Hi, Lizzie. I wanted to thank all of you for giving me this opportunity to not only teach here, but to come home. I also wanna thank Miss Bynne for everything that she's done for me so far. And I wanted to say that I'm honored to be a part of not just McGuffey School District, but the legacy that McGuffey School District has, that was built by great educators, administrators, anyone that have heart in the school, it built me. It helped shape me into who I am today. But it's also a legacy that I'm going to carry on as a third generation educator here. My mom is a teacher at Claysville, and my grandfather, her father was a teacher in the middle school. Just really cool getting to be a third generation educator here. But I also am excited to be a part of the major students and the staff as well. But my mom's friend once said that I would always come home, because once you're a Highlander, you're always a Highlander.
Amen.
I need a motion to hire Angie Waitovich as a fifth grade teacher at Master Step Nine prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment, Joe Walker Elementary, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Welcome to McGuffey, Ms. Augustine.
I speak on behalf of Joe Walker and our proud classmates, to welcome Angie Waitovich as a Walker Elementary for a fifth grade student. Angie is on vacation tonight, I know she's listening, and so congratulations, Angie, we're excited. She has taught in Virginia for thirteen years, she comes with us with lots of experience. She was on the Open Educator Award, which is the very prestigious award based on test scores. So we are excited to welcome her to McGuffey.
Need a motion to hire Meade Kogar as an elementary computer teacher at Master Step Four prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment, Claysville Joe Walker Elementary Schools, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement, and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Again, welcome to McGuffey.
I'm glad again, it's on vacation. And they also plan their vacation around the area, so. Um, I hope she's enjoying. She comes back from Wayne'sburg with her young family, she's a player, she's up in the area. She also taught in Virginia for ten years, um, and then came back home to give a family. So we are also excited to have her here on behalf of Joe Walker and Claysville.
I need a motion to hire Connor Hassan as a technology education teacher at Bachelor's Step One prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment, middle school, high school, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement, and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Welcome to McGuffey, Mr. Bonus.
Thank you, uh, tonight, um, it's a welcome and it's a pleasure. Had a little bit of the changing of the guard at the high school. Um, Mr. Douglas has gone on to a new opportunity, and we had three retirements, as you know. Um, and a great shout out to Mrs. Materio, Mr. Macbeth, Mrs. Ross, for all their years of service, thirty-plus years of service at the high school um, to the school district. So now it's time to retool, and we've been fortunate enough to come upon some great candidates. Our first candidate tonight for hire is Connor Hassan. He comes to us from Penn West University. Um, he lives in Washington. He's uh, finished his uh, fresh student teaching this past May. So May, July is a pretty good tight timeline. He did his student teaching at Cannon McMillan High School, and um, we're very excited about the things that he's gonna bring to us in the area of tech ed for the middle school, high school.
Connor?
I just wanna say thank you all for being here and for serving the community. Although I'm not from the area, I went to Trinity, as you said. I spend a lot of time in McGuffey School District. Um, one of my friends right down the road from here, the easiest way I explain it is it's one song from McGuffey at his house. He lets me keep a project vehicle there, we have a nineteen twenty Model T that we've been like fixing up. So I spend a lot of time in the area. I also work with an individual out in the West Alexander area, so it's another community that I spend a lot of time in. But I couldn't have got here without my mom and dad, my family. I believe I'm a fourth generation educator, so um, I have a feeling that one of my kids would be the fifth. So I'm just glad to be here.
Need a motion to hire Caroline Knowles as a school counselor at Master Step One prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment, McGuffey High School, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement, and pending receipt of all required, required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Welcome to McGuffey, Mr. Bonus.
Our second member of the summer of two thousand and twenty-five hiring is Carolyn Knowles, who comes to us um, with a bachelor's uh, from Duquesne University, and a master's in school counseling from Cal, Penn West University. I'm sorry. She completed her school counseling practicum at South Yet um, School District and uh, Upper St. Clair School District. And we're just very excited, uh, guidance is a very crucial part of what we do, and we're hoping that Carolyn joins us and uh, and has a great experience here and a great career at McGuffey. Carolyn?
Hi, everybody, um, I'm Carolyn Knowles. I just wanted to say thank you so much for being here. Um, a little nervous, I've never spoke before, a school board before, but I love working with students. Um, I've known since I was in school that I wanted to be a school counselor, so I'm really excited for this opportunity, um, getting to work with parents and families and students and Advent, I'm super excited, so thank you so much.
Welcome. And you did all for your first time teaching at the school.
I need a motion to hire Christine Welling as a physics teacher. Let's start over. I need a motion to hire Christine Welling as a physics teacher at Master Step Five, prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment, McGuffey High School, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement, and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Welcome to McGuffey, Mr. Bonus again.
Christine, you wanna join me? Um, our third member of the summer of two thousand and twenty-five hirings here is another two thousand and eight McGuffey High School graduate, Christine Welling, so it's always great, along with Miss Leisure, who I recall from not too many years ago, or Miss Kraus from not too many years ago, sorry. Uh, but I appreciate uh, the fact here that she's willing to come here and make McGuffey home. Um, she has been teaching for the last four years at Betworth High School Physics. Um, and physics is not an easy position to fill, she is a godsend um, to our school district. So we're very thankful she has a master's in arts of teaching um, from Penn West, um, a master of science and engineering from the University of Northern Arizona, and a bachelor of science in physics from Dickinson College in Carlisle, PA. So um, we're excited um, to continue to have that great science background for all of our teachers and welcome her back home, Ms. Christine Welling.
Good evening, uh, thank you for the opportunity to, if like Lizzie said, come back home. I'm, I'm really looking forward to it, I'm looking forward to being back home and doing physics and, and doing a lot more physics, so I'm excited. Thank you.
Welcome.
Need a motion to hire Benjamin Gill as an English teacher at Doctorate Step Four prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment, McGuffey High School, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Welcome to McGuffey, Mr. Bonus.
Our last member of our hiring of the summer of two thousand uh, twenty-five is Mr. Ben Gill, who comes to us with a master of science in teaching from Drexel University. Um, Mr. Gill also has a doctor of jurisprudence, a J.D., from West Virginia University School of Law. Uh, he also has a bachelor's in arts in English from Washington Jefferson College. He's been teaching um, for the past two years at Propel, and previously taught at intermediate unit one schools. So um, once again, um, our turnover in the English department with losing two teachers, we're very excited about the skill sets he's gonna bring for our students. So, Mr. Gill?
Good evening, thank you so much, uh, I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm very excited to become part of the McGuffey family.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I need a motion to hire the following list of twenty twenty-five fall sports assistant coaches per the terms and conditions of the agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and McGuffey Education Association, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verification. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained?
I have to abstain.
One abstain?
I should get abstained just on the one.
Correct.
Say that, okay. I abstain on, but.
Isn't that a volunteer?
It's a volunteer. It's a volunteer.
Yeah.
My father-in-law.
All right, uh, motion carries, eight oh, or seven oh one.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Seven oh one. Need a motion to approve the twenty-five twenty-six high school marching band staff as listed below, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Need a motion to hire Jeffrey Franks as an accounting specialist as per the terms and conditions of the Accounting Specialist Employment Agreement, pending receipt of all required clearances, Act one sixty-eight, and medical exams.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Veen Keith Humbert as a driver. Need a motion to approve Veen Keith Humbert as a driver for the first student for the twenty-four-twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented. Should that be twenty-five-twenty-six?
Twenty-four-twenty-five, I'm there for E S Y.
Okay, gotcha. All right. No move.
Second.
Discussion?
What is, what does that mean?
Extended school year, this summer.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Jody Bonus and Pat C. Capo as drivers for G.G. and C. for the twenty-four-twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, where'd I leave off?
I mean, no, no.
Anybody say no? Abstained, motion carries. Wow, I started reading the next one. I need a motion to approve, as presented in the McGuffey School District, twenty-five-twenty-six client renewal with Lincoln Learning.
No move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Frye?
In, in the renewal attachment, it has a checkmark next to the Lincoln Empowered Course Solution with Video AI Tutor powered by Prof Jim. Does McGuffey have any oversight in that AI program?
Not with that particular online course, no.
Is that, is that an add-on to this as it's a checkbox? Is that something we had to select to?
Right, we have, we have the very basic asynchronous courses, and that would be for your French courses and also for our cyber programs. We do not have anything additional from that. And the only, the only place I think that would come into play is there is an online credit recovery component, a part of this, but again, for that, the student pays for that credit recovery. We do offer that through them.
So the AI only comes, is only used when the student is, I guess I'm confused on what you mean by that.
No, my understanding is that's not something that we've purchased. I know, I know, I know it's there as an option, but it's not an option that we use currently for our cyber programs.
But checking this box, we would? I guess I'm...
No, I, I, I think, and again, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, I have the paper copy here, but that's not something that we're, we're, it's just they have options, and that's not an option that we currently use.
So I would like to, I mean, can we, can we amend the motion that we have? Because I would rather not have an AI system that we don't have oversight of at this current time. I think it's a great option maybe for the future, but until we see how AI affects our students within our district, I would rather allow time for this to play out, and maybe even we get stats on how AI is affecting our students. Can we, can we accept this without that box being checked and not use that until further notice? Until next year or whenever this comes up again? Twenty-five-twenty-six, it would be next year.
So if that is the recognition of the board, we can certainly make sure that's not part of the package.
So would we, or would I just motion to amend this to, I think we're just going to remove that option?
But yes, you would, because the motion is out there to approve it as is, you would want to make a motion to amend.
The motion.
Yeah. As a rhetorical, to remove what you are asking them to remove, and then the board will first vote on whether or not they agree with you and your proposed motion, and then they can, that can be incorporated if it's passed into this.
Okay.
Just a motion. If that makes sense.
It does.
Okay.
So I motion to amend this motion to approve the McGuffey School District twenty-five-twenty-six client renewal with Lincoln Learning, except for, or to exclude, I don't know how we should word that, the Lincoln Empowering Course Solution with Video AI Tutor powered by Prof Jim, because that's the title of it.
Second.
Where were you voting then?
Yeah, discussion?
Wait, I thought there wasn't discussion on motion, on a motion to amend.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you're right. I apologize. Sorry.
We'd have a vote on the amendment motion.
Okay.
Um, roll call for Ms. Sabre.
So what we're voting on is Ms. Frye's motion, I'll just basically paraphrase, to uncheck the box of the AI tutor. Correct, Ms. Frye?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it by Robert's Rules of Order or our policy here we can't have a discussion?
It's just to amend. It's not, we're not voting on it, we're just amending.
No, no, he's asking about the, the order. Why do we don't? My understanding is that if we do say that we will use Robert's Rules as a guideline, and that is parliamentary procedure, you don't discuss, you don't hold discussion on an amendment to a motion.
The answer would come out of that discussion board, help me to determine, I don't know whether we get it. You still get to discuss it when we vote on the final. This is only to amend.
I think he understands.
So if it gets, if it gets approved to amend, then we'll have discussions.
I think Mr. Thomas is what is, I, I think I know what you're saying, though, is you don't know if you want that unchecked because you need more information on the AI.
But then once it's done, I can vote now?
Correct. You could.
The way to handle that in the future would be to hold off making the amendment to the motion until after we've had discussions completely, and then once we think we're ready to move on, the person makes the motion to amend, and then you hold the vote on the amend, on the amendment. Just that it is.
Ms. Sabre, roll call. You're going to vote either yes to amend and remove the checkmark on the AI tutor, or you're going to vote no to leave the checkmark on, basically, and leave the motion as is. The original motion as is, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Jingle?
No.
Mr. Fong?
Vote yes if it's for the discussion.
I'm going to vote no, because I don't have enough information on it.
I have a question about that, then. If Chad disagrees with, after our discussion, could he motion to amend it back?
Yes.
Yes, he can.
Okay, I was just curious on how...
Yes.
Right, I was just curious how if you wanted to reverse that, if you had that option, that's all. Okay.
Okay. So now, I need a motion, how was I worded, as presented, the renewal of the Lincoln Learning, but under the now unchecked mark box of the AI tutor. Correct. Yep. So I need a motion, and then a second, then we can discuss.
No move.
Second.
Now, Mr. Thomas, would you like to discuss?
Yeah. So, if you want to notice the answer, is it the one that suggested this curriculum?
So we use, we've used Lincoln for probably going on at least seventy years, and it's prior to me being here. It's, it's a curriculum that we use with our, our cyber program. It's one that we use when, again, we only offer as a language, Spanish currently, so this is primarily, we've never really had anything outside of French, but that would be an offering that we have. And then again, as you see in there, but that's a cost to students, students that need credit recovery, we offer that as an option for students who take credit recovery online. They pay for it, but we offer it through Lincoln at a rate.
So the AI aspect, is that something that's brand new this year?
It, it, yes, it appears to be, yes.
So is that Dr. Gottren, then? You know, whenever he did that curriculum review, he saw it in there, and is it advising that it be a part of it?
I, I, I believe so, because Dr. Gottren oversees it. I, although I've looked at it before myself, and that's why I didn't realize until, I just saw that we had checked that box. And again, I think we were just checking off, and I, I actually have done more due diligence because I know one of the things we're looking at from, from an administrative standpoint is a new policy that would be AI-driven, Policy Eight One Five, we're going to get to the committee, so.
How does that tie into the AI?
Well, again, any, any tools that you're seeing, even when you, even, I'll give it to you, it's very basic, because you can't stop AI completely. A student does a Google search, the first thing they're showing them is AI.
Getting AI-generated.
Yes, so it, it is one of those things, but the way this tool, if I understand correctly, works is they actually have someone that can provide them as a tutor, they can ask the AI-generated bot a question, it will pull from educational resources, and it'll provide it to them. So that's, and that's how a lot of educational companies, and we've looked at several, without looking at it any deeper, without probably speaking beyond my knowledge of it, that's what I'm assuming this is providing to them. As far as, remember this, too, our kids that take any of these courses, whether it be McSaber, the French course, or even Credit Recovery, are taking it as an asynchronous course, meaning they're taking it at their place, their space, and there's not any kind of teacher-directed, like one-to-one. This is the closest that schools are coming to that provide our education, to that would be something like this. This way, you could get an answer potentially from education, in this case, an AI bot.
Is there a deadline to renew this? What I'm, what I'm getting at is, is it possible, perhaps, if we tabled this for Dr. Gottren to come in in August and give us more information on the AI aspect? Is that possible, or is that too late?
No, I mean, I mean, from, from our student-use standpoint, we're still ahead of when it starts, so we're, we're fine.
Yeah.
May I ask what's the concern?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely. You can ask anything you want.
Or we are entrusting Lincoln Learning educators. When we, when we have students that sign up with them, we're entrusting that student to those educators, and they are saying that the, their, their teachers are running that. So we're saying, no, we, we trust them for that, but not for this. That means to me, it sounds awkward.
Well, I think, just to, for transparency purposes, and Ms. Frye, correct me if I'm wrong, please. I think what, what we're just saying, Ms. Jingle, is that we just, or Ms. Frye, we'd just like more information on the AI part of it. Dr. Ober may not know, because Dr. Gottren handled this, so maybe for us to do our due diligence for everybody involved, just have Dr. Gottren speak upon it, and then we can decide if we want to keep it or not.
Yeah.
So I would need a motion.
Motion to table. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, one opposed? Motion carries, seven one. Need a motion to approve the list of courses at the Community College of Allegheny County as dual enrollment opportunities for McGuffey High School juniors and seniors for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year.
No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., my, my apologies. Mr. Leisure?
I guess I would ask Mr. Bonus, do we have more than just this? Didn't we have other school districts that was involved in this?
We have, we've had D C A C as a major one that we've had for, for, for ten, twelve years because of the President's Transplanting. We have two of our students out in Florida. We have one student who's back in the last fifteen years. I'm, actually, I have an appointment up at Washington Jefferson College, the twenty-ninth, to go talk to, to them about dual enrollment opportunities, and so many of our students are pending Washington Jefferson students. I can't see flexibility to teach, and why we wouldn't do that. They have certain terms that they want to be considered about, but we're looking at bringing one, and then I'm hopefully to have that back to you in August, the W and J enrollment one. But, Sally Ford, we've had one kid experience with a dual enrollment.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah. So we'll be approving another one maybe later, okay?
Maybe the one with W J maybe in August, if we can count two or three seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Bonus. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I need a motion to declare the below list of textbooks, along with the supplemental or related resources associated with the attached list, as unused and unnecessary, and authorize disposal of the items as per terms and conditions of the McGuffey School District Policy Seven Zero Six Point One, disposal of obsolete outdated equipment.
No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I need a motion to auction surplus fitness equipment as part of the ongoing fitness room renovation per district policy. Items to include six Body Master pieces, eight half squat racks and bench, no weights, bars, clamps, et cetera, two dumbbell racks with dumbbells, one weight scale, one dip rack, one arm curl rack, and one lower back and ab rack.
No move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Where, where, how does the auction work? Is it something that, like, is there somewhere specific that there are auctions?
Sure, so it, on the attach there, you'll see munisibit, munisibit.com, see that three times fast. It's an online government auction that Mr. Key is going through. There is no fee for the district to do this, and we actually picked the start and end time. His hope is that some of this equipment will take care of itself by folks, you know, bidding on it, but this is, you know, this is a place that often you go to as a school to get rid of some of your, like that.
I don't see an attachment on here. Is that something that should be on here?
The public content.
Background information.
Public content, yeah.
Oh, my goodness, I totally overlooked that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And just, yeah, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to accept the donation from West Liberty University of five hundred dollars for the tennis team, per terms of the McGuffey School District Policy Seven Zero Two, gifts, grants, and donations.
No move.
Second.
Discussion? I have a discussion point. I wish, well, we don't have to answer. So the donation from West Liberty to the tennis team, is that NCAA compliant?
I don't know that. The donation was made by the head tennis coach this past school year. West Liberty was undergoing renovations to their court. They reached out to us to see if we, if they could use it. We, I said yes, and in return, the tennis coach came by just a few weeks back and said he would like to donate on behalf of our generosity, five hundred dollars towards our tennis team.
Is, is it specifically to the tennis team, or is it to the school district?
The, I have a check in front of me, but...
I mean, the check to the...
School.
Yeah, so then you don't, it's like to the school district, it's just...
But the minute says tennis team.
Mm-hmm. Yes, but the check was written to the school district.
But we had to change it.
I know. No. Because it's still line-eyed, I mean, you're, they're donating it to the, to the district, but it will go towards the tennis team's budget, correct?
The administration would be in charge of using the money as if they turn it to me.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm actually going to abstain for being an NCAA coach. I don't want to be involved in that. Need a motion to approve the agreement between McGuffey School District and Envato Healthcare Associates for Special Education-Related Services for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year as presented.
No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Like, it does intervene for a minute. I have one of our coaches telling me it is NCAA compliant. Their compliance officer would not allow it if it wasn't. Just so everybody knows.
I have a question based on the donation also. Oh, so, I'm sorry, I missed that, Zoe.
We had, I had a coach who contacted me who said it is NCAA compliant because West Liberty's compliance, compliance officer wouldn't allow the donation if it weren't.
Okay, thank you. My question is, I had no idea that West Liberty was using our tennis courts.
That's something that, again, the only fact, something that they would come to me, and I don't know if it was ever reflected in our facility use, yeah.
But facility usage is the superintendent's call.
Correct. All right.
We're out of leave off. Uh, we already voted on this, right? Yep, all right, Mr. Thank you. Need a motion to approve the agreement between the intermediate unit one and McGuffey School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which provides educational services to the district.
Some of it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the agreement with transformation learning to provide special education placement and alternative educational services as presented.
Some of it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Pennsylvania School-Based Access Program SBAP Local Education Agency Agreement to participate with support of the intermediate unit one, FY twenty-five, twenty-six as presented. I guess it's for year twenty-five, twenty, yeah.
Some of it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the agreement between McGuffey School District and Intercare Health System for Special Education psychiatric services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Some of it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the purchase of Frontline's time and attendance management software for a three-year period. There is a one-time implementation, implementation fee of three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. The reoccurring annual fee is eight thousand dollars. This software package is offered at a fifty-one fifty discount since Frontline is our absence management system, and fifty-one fifty, let me, just five thousand one, one hundred and fifty. Sorry.
Some of it.
Second.
Discussion. All, yep, Ms. Frye?
Darling, does this play into, didn't we approve Frontline?
Yeah, the last month was the Frontline financial analysis piece. This is going to be time and attendance so that we can better track who's working overtime and who isn't here and shouldn't be getting paid. Our current process is all on paper, and we are spending a lot of money buying paper time sheets, and if somebody calls off on an emergency, that time may not get reflected that they were actually out of the office, so this software system is going to help us better manage that and pay appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mrs. Hobert, Chuck, they'll have to swipe in and out?
There will be a process for them to, to either have an app where they can check in and out on an app, or we'll have a kiosk with a computer or laptop setup where they can check in and out when they come, come in and out of the building.
And the app has a, um, GPS locator so that it tells you where they are when they're checking in or out? So that they have to, if they weren't in the facility at that time, you would be able to check that?
We're going to start with, like, the custodian, cleaners, cafeteria workers first to familiarize everybody. Those are the ones that have to really manually enter all their time on time sheets, so we're going to start there first.
This is a good service whenever you have to evacuate a building, know who's in it and who's out for safety reasons.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the agreement with Kind Communication Speech Therapy Services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Some of it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve payment to Weiss, Burkhart, Kramer LLC for invoice dated July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-five cents as submitted.
Some of it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed?
Stayed.
One abstained, uh, motion carries, seven oh one. I need a motion to approve policy two hundred for adoption with revisions.
Motion.
Need a second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yes. What's the revision is, revision is the language that I, I discussed, or what is the?
No, it would be what Dr. Ober.
Oh.
Yeah, with the revision.
So I would need to make a motion to amend the motion. I'm not doing that until after everybody's kind of through discussing.
You want to keep further discussing?
Why, is there other people who have questions, I think?
Was there a second on that?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Ms. Frye?
I'm, I seconded it.
Okay, yep, sorry to call you.
Um, Ms. Frye, did you have something you wanted to discuss? Yes, go. What was yours?
Yes, and Mrs. Jordan's questions with, um, you know, she suggested that we look at there being verbiage that, um, if there's, you know, classroom increases based on PDE information. If PDE's information, I don't know how to ask the question. If PDE's information that suggests your average student class size, is that based on the number of students in our district? I, I, I don't know how I'm trying to phrase the question. I apologize.
PD has recommended.
Okay.
Class sizes, starting in the early elementaries, um, and we have tended to always be below that number.
Okay.
And, um, and there is a total number of students that can occupy any space.
Right.
There's an occupancy rate for that as well, which we also currently are under in each of our buildings.
Right. So what do we do, I guess, with this policy in the case that I know right now it's only, you know, maybe a handful of people who may utilize the policy, and I, I agree, it's, it is an awesome, awesome idea. I'm all for the idea. What I'm concerned with is if there is need to increase the classroom, does that come to the board? Or is that something that administration can do? And what if that classroom increase requires us to hire a new teacher?
So currently, as it is written, it would be the recommendation, I mean, not the recommendation, it would make, be the decision of the administrative team to determine that.
But, uh, capacity, or is.
Correct.
Availability of space.
Nothing would occur if it, again, our students here have priority.
Right, but if the availability of space is recommended by PDE to be a certain number, it would allow for administration to fill that classroom to that capacity, correct?
Correct.
Theory, yes. I think, I honestly don't have a concern on that. I do, I do think if the board wants to be cautious and maybe, maybe add the, the verbiage that if the decision would put the enrollment, uh, at a class size above the recommended rate, it would come to the board. I don't feel, I think, I, I think it's overkill, quite frankly, to make the superintendent come to the board with every one of them.
I'm not saying everyone. I'm saying as a result of this policy, if we take in so many students because this policy is allowing it, and therefore we're allowed to make, the, the administration is allowed to say, we need to increase this class size, or we need two classrooms now, so we need to hire a new teacher, or something like that. That's, that's what I'm getting at, is it also, even if we don't have to hire a new teacher, if we have an increased class size because of this policy, and it takes away from the, the smaller class sizes that our kids are benefiting from currently, that hurts our McGuffey students.
Long. And that, instead of you put a number on it, let's be honest, if it's one student who enrolls.
Right.
That increases the class somewhere by one.
Right.
I don't, that's not an issue, I don't think.
One.
But I think if it's, if you're looking at it, and I personally don't think this is going to happen, but let's say, I don't know, they're mostly elementary students, and so you're going to end up with a elementary class that's increased by, let's say, five, and that puts them over the cap that we follow. That I could see coming to the board and asking for, or giving a recommendation and asking the board to either approve or not approve, but I don't, I don't think it needs to come just for every increase, because every enrollment would be an increase.
I'm, but I'm.
I make a suggestion.
Yes.
Policy is the governing.
Right.
Then there are procedures to follow that policy. I think what you need is the policy, and then you create the procedure that you follow based on number of students underneath that. But they're two separate things, but they're connected.
But it's not in here.
Right.
And that's what I'm getting at.
Typically, procedures aren't part of the policy.
They're not.
You create the policy, and then you would create the procedures to follow that policy. And you could create those procedures to have grade level limits, for example. I mean, you could create the, the process any way you want.
Some policies include procedures, not many, but some do. Um, but to that point.
Well, let me just clarify, though, the procedures is something that we would.
And I've said this before, the board votes policies, it is the administration's responsibility
Correct.
To develop procedures, and that's how they enforce, or, or govern, from their perspective, that's how they will be on a day-to-day basis, those policies.
Right.
The board doesn't come up with the procedures. That's the administration's job.
I understand that.
I just wanted to be sure that we're all clear.
Talking about this policy and what kind of way it could potentially hold. We do have a hundred and thirty teachers that could say, I want to bring my kids here. I understand it's not likely, but it could be twenty. We don't know. We really, that is all hypothetical of, well, we, yes, we have a few that are interested now. And I know we can always revisit this. But in this moment, right now, the way the policy is written, or right now, the way that I'm understanding this is going to work, is there is potential for class sizes to increase to, to a point that could negatively impact McGuffey students, is basically my concern, to sum it up.
And I, I don't know if this relieves your concerns or not, Ms. Frye, but as it's written right now, it does say the enrollment is subject to space availability, so.
And that our students' needs will be placed first.
So I think we have to entrust the administrators to, to, to understand, and, and that's part of the procedure.
Right.
And if it gets to be too much, then they know that they can't accept these students.
But it's too much as in the, the availability. Is that PDE's recommendation, or is that, I, I don't even know what McGuffey's.
Well, we follow.
Preferred class.
So, we, we have always, not always, we, for the most part, have remained below, recommend, uh, class sizes for each of the grade levels. Like, that is something that we've not approached. We're, we're, we're close in the couple areas, but not anything.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it's something that I would have to monitor, and again, according to the policy, if it did intrude on the fact that we would have to, um, increase beyond that, then that would be an area, again, that I could not have that happen, right? Like, that's, again, in, in this hypothetical where we have a hundred and thirty staff that we've identified as outside the district.
Sure.
That would be that hypothetical that would.
Right.
Right.
I understand that, but my, my question is, with the availability, the space and availability, is that, is there something that McGuffey is using as a guideline that's not recommended PDE? Because recommended by PDE might be saying you can have, I'm just going to throw a number out there, I know it's not legit, but a thirty, thirty kid classroom, thirty student classroom. I wouldn't, I think that's too many kids for one teacher, so that's, that's what I'm getting at, is, is, I know you said there's, or somebody mentioned there's a McGuffey threshold, and then there's a PDE recommended threshold. What number is that? And, like, I, I guess it's.
Yeah, it would, it would depend on, again, grade level.
Uh-huh.
Um, just the space we're talking about, because then, you know, Joe Walker looks a little bit different, classroom size, and of course, Clayville, and of course, that looks different than up here at high school, middle school. So, I mean, I, 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 I know, I completely understand wh- what the question you're asking.
Yeah.
It's, it's one of those things where, when we, we come to that point, I'll have to make that determination, but based on the fact of looking at class size, uh, the effect it's going to have on class size. I just don't think we're, we're going to be there this year, and, and as you just said, Ms. Frye, too, the board does have the opportunity, after we've gone through this, to make amendments, changes to it, based on what we're seeing happen.
And it does clearly say, enrollment is subject to space availability with school district residents receiving priority for enrollment and classroom placement. So to me, that language says we're going to put our, our district kids first, and if it's, if the increasing the class size is a detriment to our home, our home district students, then that's going to be looked at. I don't have a problem leaving that up to the superintendent. The verbiage is there to protect him as well as us and our students.
I understand. I'm not, I won't say what I want to say, but it was already brought to us to increase the class size by involuntary transfer, and that, that was something that.
Believe that came because of concerns this board had raised about budgets, but.
That's not the point. The point is that it was still being recommended, and so it's, it's tough to see this.
But it was, it was being recommended because of, of course, the budget that we're facing, but also, too, because of the class sizes that currently exist at Clayville versus the class sizes. These, the numbers still, when they met the numbers of students at Joe Walker, their class sizes are still going to be larger than what we had. That's all I'm saying.
No, I understand.
It was a recommendation that everyone knows here, it was not something that I was comfortable with, but I knew what was being asked from the budget, that I had to make a recommendation.
And, and I do understand that, I, I do. It, it's just, I guess, for me, it wasn't a prior, priority before, so it's concerning moving forward, that it's not a priority now, is, is my concern with this policy.
I think this policy, though, is intended, with all due respect, Dr. Ober, um, correct me if I'm wrong, it's more geared towards trying to get the teachers the ability
Yes.
To bring their, their child here.
Yes.
And in turn, if you're a teacher, if you're a young teacher, and you bring your kid here who's in kindergarten, the likelihood is you're going to stay here and teach for twelve years because you don't want to move your kid out of the district.
No, I totally understand the purpose of it, and that's why I say, I think it's a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
But at what cost to our district? At what cost to our students?
I think we have to entrust that the administrators will not make it a cost to our, to our students, and I think that's why that verbiage is in there.
I do too.
Um, so I just, I, I think, this goes back to what we always talk about, trust. We just got to trust that our administrators are going to do right by the students.
And again, if, you know, you're revisiting this a year from now, after we've tried it for a year, you know, that may look different. Um, but I don't, I don't think that the solution is to not try it.
I'm not saying not at all. So, I, I think, there's a lot of things, Rebecca. As far as, like, favoritism to these students, or these students end up in their parents', we have students in our district whose parents also teach in our district. I mean, these are problems that are unique, that could be unique. Um, I think we try it.
Uh, yes, Mrs. Robardich.
We approved so many things, and I, can you refresh my memory?
Sure.
Have we approved transfers of students for, say, when they want to come to the district for SVA?
Yes.
Do they come through the board?
Yes.
So will this be something that comes through the board? When we want to transfer and.
That's what the policy is, saying that it's an option.
Yes, I'm getting.
I, I think what Mrs. Robardich is saying is that somebody comes to Doc and says, yeah, I want to bring my, my first grader here. Dude, does the board have to approve that or not?
Right.
I will defer to the council, and that's not how I understood.
Not the way, uh, I would say, no, not the way it's written. I mean, this is, um, a policy, I'm sorry, I'm missing the first page, but this entire policy deals with the enrollment in the district, so there are other, um, issues inherent to residency that, that the board does not determine, you know, that the administration determines.
And if I'm not mistaken, the board votes on transferred students because of tuition costs. That's really what we're voting on, correct?
I believe so.
I would assume so, yes. I'm not, I'm not very, I'm not overly familiar with, if I was that program, however, I would also say that that could be something that could actually.
We, we, we have to have board approval for.
For the, for the tuition.
Yes.
Which is why it's brought to the board.
Right, not for the particular.
Whereas this, because it's waiting to see no tuition cost, which is why it wouldn't have each one of them come to the board.
This is more of a blanket.
Yes.
Um, one size fits all if you're in this category versus maybe.
And because it doesn't involve the transfer of money.
Right.
Each one doesn't have to come to the board for approval.
All right, so we have the motions, we have the second, we have discussion. Is there any further discussion before we vote?
Uh, I just wanted to address, I just wanted to address, um, Ms. Jordan's concern about, uh, preferences, uh, which school they would go to, and I know that's, that's a hard thing to sort out. I don't want my kid to go to, you know, Joe Walker or Claysville. Um, I don't know how we would sort that out, but I'll, I'll. Um, I don't know how we would sort that out, but I also would want to make sure that students who are currently in the district are in the school that they're supposed to be in. You know, and I don't know if that's something that we check on regularly, just to make sure that they're, you know.
I actually want to talk later, when we get to the end of the meeting, if we ever get to the end of the meeting, um, about the, um, and Mrs. Jordan mentioned this, and I have asked about it before, with parents in our district who would like to move their children, let's say they live in the Claysville area, where their sho- their child would attend Claysville, but they work at Joe Walker area, um, and they would like to have their child at Joe Walker instead, because it makes it more convenient for them to be able to attend school functions, drop them off to school, pick them up, whatever. We don't currently allow that. And I do think that that's a useful conversation, but that's kind of separate from this.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
Yes, I'm just going to say, that's why I was asking, saying later.
It, it is a really good question, though, Mr. Grove, because if you have a teacher that teaches high school, obviously their elementary kid's not going to go to the high school.
Right.
So which school do we put them in? But I think that falls back on the administration and see what.
As I've already expressed, that is solely based on budget and in how we have districts, how we have drawn up the line in our district.
No, 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 no. What I was talking about.
For this. No, 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 for this.
From Mr. Grove. So say you have a high school teacher, say Mr. Bovis is principal, and he has an elementary kid that he wants to get elementary school here. So which school do we put he or she in?
One of the things I would use actually is putting it in class.
Yeah.
Be the first place we'd book.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
But the employee wouldn't have to say.
No.
All right, so any further discussion?
I make a, where is I'm a discussion? I make a motion to amend the motion, um, so that the verbiage includes enrollment is subject to space and special needs availability with school district residents receiving priority for enrollment and classroom placement.
You're just adding subject to space and.
To special, special services.
Special services.
Probably better verbiage.
If I could suggest maybe space and special services and instruction.
Yes.
So that you're kind of encompassing everything that, because services can sometimes be different than instruction. So space and special.
Um, how about enrollment is subject to availability, um, of space and/or special services and instructions? Does that work?
Space and special.
Subject to space and special services and instructions.
Does that work, okay?
Yes. Yes, did you? Make sure she does.
My second.
Okay.
Okay, so the second paragraph, yeah, the second, I might not even have it clear from you.
Well.
Yeah, yeah, no, I do that a lot. Okay, so I, the second paragraph, enrollment is subject to space and special services and instruction availability. Is that good?
I would do availability, uh, what I actually said was, enrollment is subject to availability of, of space and/or special services and instruction. Dramatically.
I'm going to have this list to read it.
You can read it, okay.
Go read it.
Uh, by the way, I'm very much enjoying my first time here at a meeting. Uh, the motion, um, amends the second paragraph only, first sentence, and it would say, enrollment is subject to availability of space and/or special services and, special education services and instruction. It is not, I concede. And then it would continue on, so I'll just reread it over again. It would say, enrollment is subject to availability of space and/or special education services and/or instruction, comma, with school district residents receiving priority for enrollment and classroom placement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we need a roll call. You're voting yes to amend it to what the solicitor just read, or you're voting no to leave it to the original, not to amend it?
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Leach?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Stigl?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries eight to zero, and we now will, I, I need a motion. I need a motion to approve the revised agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Do we need to have any more discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I need a motion to approve policy two, one, six for adoption.
So moved. Second. Move me. Second.
Yeah. All right, we have a, uh, motion, we have a second, do we have a discussion?
This is the one that was up last month for a first reading, um, and there really was not a whole lot of change. The biggest change, I mean, there were mostly grammatical things, commas, even mechanical things like spacing, but the biggest thing is the including, inclusion of the verbiage about, um, maintaining records electronically. It's assuring appropriate retention and security of student records electronically for at least five years after grad- graduation. And we were asked to change that verbiage specifically for FFA, um, and something that came out of their most recent audit. So that's what it is, and this would be the night that we would vote on it, uh, because it, we've already had it since the month of first reading. I have not had anyone contact me with any concerns or any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. The budget expenditure report for the month of June 2025 is presented for your review. The P car spending report for the month of June 2025 is presented for your review. Do we have a solicitor's report?
Uh, no, I would just wish, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Um, we have a Western Area Career and Technology Center report. Ms. Frye.
There were lots of attachments for you this month. Um, again, I apologize for not having anything last month. I had forgotten all of my notes. Um, obviously, no student of the month due to, um, this month of June, no schools. There are the attachments from the graduates, um, the list of graduates that all graduated, um, in addition to the school district they graduated from. Um, actually, our student of the month tonight was one of those graduates, so congratulations to all of our McGuffey graduates from Western Area. Um, the other attachments that's there for your view is the, um, student enrollment information, and I think the rest of those are all the, um, budgetary items. The one here is the cooperative education update. Um, that has the list of, um, the district, the students in the district, the grade, um, the, the employer, um, and the program that those students are currently co-lopping with. Um, so we always like to see all of those co-op programs. There's a lot of students that end up with full-time jobs, um, once they leave Western Area, and, um, it's really exciting to see that. Um, but yeah, so lots of information, there are the minutes from the meeting, um, all for your, all for your view. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Pennsylvania School Board Association, a report, Ms. Shingle?
Um, just really a couple of things, urgent. There, once again, they remind us, like, every day, they're sending something saying, contact your representatives over this cyber charter reform. Okay, um, and then, you know, on September 12th, and this is at onsite at Mechanicsburg, that is the, uh, starting strong onboarding for revisions of the year. The, the, um, school leadership conference is October 19th and 20th through 21st. That one's in the Poconos, if anybody wants to vacation there. That one is, again, an onsite one. Oh, I lost my thing here. The other, um, the other ones are, uh, the webinars. And remember that there are some of them that are 10 minutes long, and really, there's, there's valuable information on there. I hope that there's building bridges coming up, there is designing spaces, it goes from everything from finances to new equipment, and, and really, it's all information that you can use. Uh, there's always something about school safety and about preparedness. Please consider something. Look at something. Even if you're listening to a 10-minute webinar, see what you can learn there. And once again, they're asking, anybody interested on being on that board? There's two positions open. Is that something that you think you'd be interested in? When those people come and present to us, they're people saying, start at just right where we are. So that might be your calling, if, if that's something you'd be interested in. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shingle. Policy committee chairperson, Ms. Jackson, any report?
Um, we were not able to meet, um, last week, uh, so our next meeting will be August 12th, and we're still working on the AI, um, and technology, uh, yeah, policies. Forgot the word policies, it's been a long day. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
And it is four o'clock on August 12th.
Thank you.
And that happens to be, because our August meeting, our regular scheduled board meeting is early in August, it's the Tuesday before that Thursday meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We will now take public comment on non-agenda items.
I think it can actually be.
I think it could be both, and we just haven't changed it yet. Non, yeah, non-agenda and agenda items. Chief, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're welcome. Go ahead, Ms. President. Chrissy Florian?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, legal name is Marjorie, by the way, new solicitor, but I go by Chrissy. Don't know why my mom didn't just name me that. Um, anyways, welcome to the new solicitor. I just want to say, welcome to McGuffey, and, um, we're glad that you're here. I believe that your services are well-needed, and I hope that the board only grows from here. I'm going to try not to cry, I'm a very emotional person, um, but I would just want to start off by thanking McGuffey as far as all the teachers, the counselors, and the other staff and the community that has, through the years, been there for, supported during some of the hardest, saddest parts of Hayden's life, and that helped me, as a widowed, widowed mother, guide and transform him into the young man that you have seen tonight. I am beyond thankful to all of you, especially to those that stepped up and helped us in our time of need to make life a little bit easier. Hayden's an amazing young man, and I credit that to this village, my late husband, and, um, that had, had nine years to raise him, and to my boyfriend of the last six years for stepping up to help me raise him. Uh, thank you to Mr. Doc, Dr. Gautren, for your kind words about my son and making sure that Hayden has been recognized, and same goes to you, Dr. Ober. Kind of random. Um, I would, I would encourage the district to enforce and be vigilant when it comes to the dress code this year. As you know, I have five daughters. Um, from what I've heard, you have girls in this school with inappropriate clothing. It seems to be an issue in the middle and the high schools, as it is not completely the school's responsibility, that I would, um, say that the parents need to do better. We are raising young women. Um, I know I've mentioned a couple times about that, and just these, I would not let my children walk out of the house with some of these clothes that I hear they are wearing in school. You would not let your teachers that you pay, um, dress like that. So I would just suggest that teachers and staff be more vigilant about it. I mean, I don't know where the boundary is with all of that, but it's just, it's just distasteful. Um, now, to turn it around a little bit on the more negative, uh, as, of course, I do, um, I believe that there is always room for improvement in everything. Going back and listening to the two previous meetings, as I was unable to be here 85% of that time, I try my best to be at every meeting. As you most of you know, I am disheartened by some of the board members' actions, and I will be reviewing those meetings one more time before I speak up publicly, publicly again. I'm glad to hear that some finally, can't read my own writing, that ha- have acknowledged that there is a bullying issue, but I wasn't prepared to hear that it, it to be discussed as an adult board member's issue. As I observe, I find some members' tone and delivery of what they say to be aggressive. I suggest some people to take a step back and to reevaluate your delivery, because as far as I'm concerned, you come across as aggressive. I, like I've said in the past, that the children in the community are watching, some of you were new to, some of you were new, new to this, and it, um, at one point, so you used to be new also to all of this. So the please is treat others with, uh, the kindness that you would want to be treated with. Um, we feel the hostility, and y'all stress me out. Uh, please, uh, only turn on your mics when you're speaking, because when I was listening online, and people are coughing, you're coughing very loudly, it's, it's distracting. Um, one more thing, point was, okay, she's going to do it, but I totally agree. Like, I think that if somebody is terminated, I think that we, as a community, should, in some ways, know who and what has happened. I mean, it is our children in this school. We, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Chief?
One more, Mr. President, Vicki Jordan.
Thank you, Chief.
Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township, I promise I'll be quick. I just need clarification. So when it comes to the resignations, not termination, for me, termination and resignation are two completely different things. And I know with termination, you have to be a little more sensitive about it. But my concern is, with the resignations, and my confusion is, are we no longer going to know at all, because at least we could come in and see it on the agenda? And from what it sounds like, now that's going to be removed, so the only way the community's going to know who's leaving our district voluntarily is through the gossip mill. So am I correct on that? I'm confused on what was the final decision for how you're going to list resignations. What I took away from it was, the community, the taxpayers, the parents, we're no longer going to have any clue who's resigning. So if I can get any clarity on that at some point, I'd really appreciate it. Because I think, I do feel like we have a right to know who's leaving our district.
We can talk.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief? I'm sorry, Chief.
That concludes all, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items for discussion?
I do have one.
Go ahead, Ms. Jordan, or Ms. Jackson.
Two. My understanding, as, as far as to what Mrs. Jordan was just speaking, my understanding was, we were going to leave it up to the administration to ask those who are resigning if they would be okay with us putting their name out there, um, and leave it up to the employee. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, based on that decision, as to whether their name would appear or not appear on the paper copies that we will hand out, correct? Okay. Um, the other thing is, and I mentioned this earlier, I've asked about this before, um, but I do, I do think that, that it is a valid point. Um, I am all for, I, and I think that's been very clear, the, the idea of allowing our teachers who live, our employees, to live in other districts, to have the option to have their children in the district in which they work. Um, but at the same time, I do think it, it raises an interesting question about how we treat our own home district residents. There are families who, for lots of varying reasons, would maybe rather have their child at Joe Walker or Claysville, whatever those extenuating circumstances are, and that's not allowed at all currently. We follow strictly wherever they live, and I think it's a valid conversation to have. Because when you have families who are saying to you, you know, I understand that we live in the area where my child would go to Claysville, but we both work, the husband and the wife, work in the Joe Walker area, South Franklin, that end of Washington, right in that area. It would be, we would be much more participative, participative, huh? Participative in our child's life if we had them at a school where we could get to quickly. You know, on my lunch break, I could go attend this program, or whatever it is. And if we don't, if we don't have that, then we're going to have to look at alternatives, meaning not have them enrolled in our district. I just, I think it's a conversation worth having.
I would just add a few things. Transportation is our responsibility, so if somebody lives in West Alexander and we approve them to go to Joe Walker, that is our responsibility to transport them, that's going to increase costs. We could have 50 students that want to go to fourth and fifth grade at Joe Walker, and then what do you do about space at Joe Walker? So although I agree that we need to explore options, I think we also need to look at the cost to the district within all of those options.
I agree, and I think there are ways around that, and I'm not saying certainly everybody who wants to make a change. I'm looking, I would say, I mean, it would be four extenuating circumstances, not just, you know, I like it better there, or whatever. But the other thing is, parents to whom I've spoken have said, we'll transport our child. That was one of the reasons they were looking at that, was because then they would like to have the opportunity to drop their child off at school and pick their child up from school, and they can't do that if their child is in the other school. And then you get into, you're sending a child, then they've got to worry about having someone home to, for when that child's getting dropped off, because they're not there. So I'm not saying every case, and I do think you'd have to have guidelines as to what the extenuating circumstances are, how that's handled, and I do think transportation would have to be on the, it would have to be the parent's responsibility. We provide transportation for the area in which they live. If they would like something outside of that, and we grant that because of extenuating circumstances, then that's on them, I think would be the way to verb the word that.
I would add, though, this is why I am in favor of the administration making that decision. They know the student, they know what's going on, they can decide, they see what's the best option. I'm just saying, we have to trust them at some point.
I agree, but at this point, we don't, they don't have the room to make any decision. It's just, we follow where they live.
I just think you're getting into a slippery slope, letting people decide. It's, whenever you start talking about each circumstance, now you're going to be, people are going to blame favoritism. I think it's just a really slippery slope.
I think the other thing you'll get into is, if I take my daughter, if I live in Claysville and I say I want my daughter to go to third grade at Joe Walker and have the semester in, I don't like her teacher, I'm going to take her back to Claysville now. I mean, where does it stop? I mean, and if we allow, I mean, say you have a teacher that lives in West Alexander that has a daughter that goes to Claysville, and she's an elementary school teacher at Joe Walker, and she wants her kid to go to Joe Walker with her because she's at Joe Walker, she's going to Joe Walker, what happens if she gets transferred over to Claysville because we need another teacher at Claysville? Now you're taking that child out of that class and bringing it back to Claysville. Like Mr. Grove said, I think there's so many scenarios, and the way we have been doing it for years. Mr. Bonus, you've been in here half a century.
Wow. You know, I was going to say, I won't say much, but again, it's, yeah, down to this. There are many scenarios. And even for a chance to say, yes, I'll, I'll, I'll transfer them, if they're making a plan where they don't want to do it anymore. And that's all, I think it's not out of understanding where they're coming from, what they're asking for, but then it can turn into your own school choice within your own district. And just because Mrs. Fry brought this up earlier, we could find ourselves then having a class that has more than, because everyone wants to be at Joe Walker, wants to be at Claysville, so it really isn't as simple as what it then becomes.
Yeah.
More so, that's, you know, we've done our best to look at our district from the perspective of class size, in fact. How we're transporting them, where they need to be based on our size, that's really what dictates and drives, along with the cost, you know, what we're doing.
You can get a parent that says, I don't want to drive them anymore, and if I do, I'm not reimbursed by the district. If a parent can get reimbursed.
Right.
No, I, no, I'm sorry. We can talk.
If something does continue to happen, I will stop and we will, the line has ran through my yard, and I'm told no.
I would agree that it's a very slippery slope, and I think we have a lot more priorities to work on. I agree. Any other items for discussion this evening?
I was just saying, I think that's interesting, considering the number of people who have said we need to look at how to maintain enrollment and increase enrollment, and yet we're not looking outside the box for ways in which to encourage them to stay in our district instead of disenrolling their students and putting them in cyber school.
I think it's fair they're looking into other ways, that's why the support is propitious.
I think this new policy 200, though, is a way to try to increase enrollment.
You're not disputing that at all. That's why I voted for it.
All right, just to make an announcement so I don't forget it at the next meeting, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss personnel. Covers me, just in case I forget the next time to make the announcement. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved, sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Meeting is adjourned at 8:40 PM. I know, I was like, I was about 8:39. Yeah. You'll need somebody to let you in. Yeah, yeah, and I got to sign the one I had signed on.